Rock and roll.
Yep, ready to roll.
Okay, we're up, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um, opening, uh, the planning board meeting of August twenty-sixth, um, we've got Lara Eldon, Sue Meyer, and I'm Stephanie Hawkins, and I'm sitting in, uh, for Matt Francisco, who isn't here tonight, um, so I'll chair the proceedings. It's a, it's a short agenda, mercifully, um, so those are my remarks, according to the agenda, right? Next approval of minutes, we don't have any, so, uh, we'll skip that, shorter agenda all the time, um, so I'm gonna, uh, do a shout out here. Sue, do you have a report as a member of the planning board?
Uh, my report usually is not related to us.
All right.
The water leak is still going on at, uh, Campbell there. It just, it goes on, it's from little trips to little leaks, now it's main thing, it's just rushing up, uh, serious, and I don't, we, you know, that's, that's the report.
Thank you for that contribution, Sue.
Yeah.
Moving over to Lara.
No report, nothing to report.
Okay, all right. I don't have anything to report, um, and we don't have any, uh, specific correspondence, um, that isn't, uh, that isn't related to matters before us, and I'm gonna propose that we address old business first, and then new business, our new business is a workshop, and our old business is taking care of some sort of empirical items for preparing for and setting a public hearing, um, so I'd like to address old business for forty Main Street.
I felt the same way, too.
Oh, okay, good, yeah. All right, there's alignments in the room. Are you aligned with our, all right, that's great.
Yeah.
Great, so it's a, a change of use permit, and we need to set a, a public hearing? Is there anything, um, is there anything new? I know you did bring updated, updated plan.
Yes, the, the plans are, are the same, um, that the suggestion we did out of parking table.
Yep, I see that here.
So it shows the parking requirement per the code.
Okay.
And it's broken down into the, the various spaces, the retail.
Right.
And, um, the commercial, uh, what's interesting, I guess, it, there's, it's the same for both, um, it's one hundred and fifty, uh, square feet, um, is, is-
Oh, for re-
For parking.
For parking.
Yes.
So it's, it's the same head, uh, same car count, uh, amount either way.
Okay.
But we wanted to put that on the front, so it's, it's there and it's clear, um, and it stays with the project.
All right, great, thanks, and, um, and there's an updated, uh, sort of larger set that you've, you've provided to the clerk?
Uh, well, we, I have, uh, we sent one in.
Oh, okay.
I have a larger drawing, um-
Okay, but you don't need to get it out, that's, that we don't need it for here, I just wanna make sure that we have that, and that will be part of the, you know, part of your application.
Yep.
Okay, ah, there it is, superimposed over, okay, great. One-on-one.
Yeah, this is, this is new, last time we had it, we had big rolls of-
Yes, I was trying to reduce the amount of-
Yeah. Let me just, uh, hang on just a moment. So, A one-on-one, okay, so this is, this whole swap, can you hold that?
Yes, sure.
I'm just gonna turn the pages around, sorry, Sue, can you go over? All right, so there we are. So that's our original, and this is our new one, sounds good, okay, so we'll have those added formally. Okay, great, great. Okay, and these are-
So-
That's a breakdown of-
Yeah, that's right.
So, um, so this is-
Yep.
-to be a future retail A.
Right, five-twenty-two.
Um, and then this is, uh, the office space.
Yep, okay.
And then this is, uh, retail B.
Okay, great.
Um, but we just wanted to break it down, just so.
Yep, sensible, makes sense, yep, under, it's understandable, it's all clear, okay, thanks. So we have that, and, um, okay, so in addition to the updated parking table, we're gonna need you to fill out, uh, seeker form, um, and it's a, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the seeker short form, and you'll find that on the planning board page of the Village website, and if you have any questions as you're navigating the Village website, our esteemed clerk Jeff Bitakovich can provide you guidance, um, great.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll need that at the, we'll bring that to the public hearing. Um, we're gonna need you to send out, uh, blast zone, uh, notices to adjacent properties, and, um, you know what, is it just adjacent, or is it sometimes across the street? Yeah, adjacent and across the street, and by adjacent, I mean, including across the street.
Okay.
And, um, but you know what, I, I don't have the property map identified which ones those are.
Uh, if there are something, hold on, I think there was, uh, right, yeah, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, this is what I was looking for, thank you, okay.
It's on the small one, too.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I guess in our application, we did identify all the properties that were touching and across the way.
Okay, great, so for each of those, you'll need to send out your notice of the ones of the public hearing.
So, sorry, so that comes from us?
Yep, that's your action item.
Okay.
Okay, and so-
Tim, we'll provide you with the notice.
Okay.
It's the public hearing notice that-
Right, but he has to do the packaging and send it to the address.
Yes, he'll do the sending out, but we'll provide the actual notice.
And it, does it go, is it hand delivered?
Certified. It's gonna be certified return receipt, and you, to the, uh, to the public hearing, you will bring the receipts that come back to you. Okay, uh, great, thanks, Jeff.
I have one other question.
Yeah, of course.
And I believe we're supposed to put a notice in the, in the window, uh, on the building as well?
There's a, there is, um, there's gonna be, you also will obtain this from, from the clerk.
Okay.
There's a, a large, sort of, board or placard that you display to let people know that, oh, there's a public hearing being held, like, relevant to the property, so, um, okay, and so with that, do you guys have any questions or contributions about that, or what we've talked about so far, about the updated parking table? Um, I don't, I think that that was-
Yeah, I think that's what we discussed last time at the meeting, and then this is the new one that they came out with, that's sort of the requirement of a-
Right.
Not a requirement, but we asked for a breakdown of parking, because it's, it's fairly a large group of people.
Right.
And, uh, and so on, and then it's a, with the retail, so this is, I think, the result of that.
Yep, yep.
And then, uh, I think that's taken care of.
Okay, and so in addition to that, I know that, um, related to this, and Jeff, I'm gonna look to you for some guidance here, we also need to, uh, deliberate on recommendation to the Village Board about the payment, uh, payment and low tax, the parking waiver that's indicated, is that something we do as part of the site plan, or is that something we do?
That, as part, that's usually delivered with the resolution.
With the resolution.
So it'll be after the public hearing.
Okay, and it's, it's part of the resolution?
Yes.
After, okay, thank you, okay, great, okay, so we'll take that up for discussion at, at the public hearing.
One thing that I, I think I also remember was that, um, I believe Matt advised that maybe it would be a good thing to talk to the Village Board about the number of parking, so-
Oh, yeah.
I believe, I, I don't, don't know exactly what transpired, but I, I, we recommended that our client approached the Board, and I believe he did.
He did?
Yeah, so I, I don't know exactly who he spoke with, but he said that he, he did.
Oh, okay.
Um, just so they, they, they're aware of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Just because of the unprecedented number of, uh, payment in, in low parking?
Yeah, the waiver.
So I'm not sure what their determination would be, or if there's any sort of understanding-
There's no correspondence has come back to us in that, so-
Okay, um, thank you, I, I don't know what sort of, they, I mean, how formal or informal the conversation was, but I think that they, they are aware of it.
Okay, good, okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. All right, so with that, uh, I think we should, we should pick a date on the calendar, and we wanna be in two issues of the paper of record, so at the earliest, we can get our notice into next week's paper, um, it will be in the week of the sixth through the tenth, um, and we won't meet, that would be, the ninth is our regularly scheduled meeting, but we won't have a public hearing on that date, and we'll wait until our next meeting on the twenty-third.
A lot.
Right, yep, the twenty-third, okay, so the public hearing, we're gonna set the public hearing for the twenty-third, and, okay, great, so can I have a motion to set the public hearing for the twenty-third, for our applicant at forty Main Street for a change of use? So help me God, it's more than-
Help me God.
I second the motion, if that was official.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, great, and a second by Laura, okay, great, thanks, um, okay, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, great. Okay, we'll see you, and perhaps your client-
Yes.
-on the evening of the twenty-third, right?
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Thanks for the updated materials.
Of course.
And, um, again, the clerk can help you out if you need any guidance.
Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Should I come to the table?
Yeah. All right, so thank you for waiting.
Oh, no, that was nothing, and I didn't want to make him wait, uh, because I do-
Well, we're gonna be sort of workshopping a little more than we workshopped him, so, thanks. Great, okay, so, uh, now to the matter of fifteen Main Street, uh, Laura, owned by Laura Bergman, represented by Ju Hee of River Architects, um, so we have received, now is this the, is this the same-
Same, the P D R.
That you email, uh, emailed on, sent over on August twenty?
Yes.
Okay, great, good.
Oh, so we have multiple copies, okay.
Well, this is the physical copy that your team brought over.
Yeah.
Great, okay, all right, so tell us what we're looking at here, Ju Hee.
Okay, so we wanted to show you the difference between the, um, May twenty-nineteen, the approved site plan.
So I have a copy of the approved site plan here for, for us?
Right, great, and, um, the difference, because that was so early in the process, um, we wanted to update you on it, and, and, um, as far as the history behind that, um, drawing is, because we were still in the process of negotiating the purchase of the sidewalk, we were just showing what, um, what we can do before the purchase of sidewalk, and I, um, so that's why this is simplified, and then-
Well, right, and also just to, to be clear, this is, this was, we expedited this, and we approved this because the interest at the time was to prioritize opening up tours, um, and so we, and so we understood you would be working in phases, and that you would be coming back to us for eventual work to be done.
Right.
Right.
And, um, and then what happened-
And this, oh, and I just wanna, sorry, I wanted to, this is a, an ADA-
Ramp area.
ADA compliant ramp, right?
Ramp area, right.
Presenting here.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, and then, since that, and so, the iteration, just a quick summary, is that, um, the client always, um, was in favor of the covered, uh, deck, covered patio, uh, here, um, but, um, uh, the Village was not, uh, willing to sell her, um, the patio, the Village patio, um, but they were willing to provide, uh, the egress, you know, for the stoop.
For the stoop, yep.
And for a while, you know, she thought maybe that was what she should, um, do, and then she thought about it, and she, um, kind of, she, the cost was an issue, and she finally bit the bullet, and, um, when she heard that the building inspector said, "You have the right to, um, you know, build that front porch with H D R V's approval," then she, uh, decided to go for it, um-
Now, is there a reason you didn't come back at that time to update the site plan to reflect ADA compliant access on the, on the front entry porch?
This, this one, you mean, or this one?
No, no, here, the front entrance, this porch, right, because the, you would have the, in the original, right, the covered, the covered ramp was going to, it was going to be a covered porch, not an exposed porch, or, sorry, it was complete, it was, they were gonna come up here, and the entrance was the, the entrance here-
On the side, yeah.
Was gonna be here, right?
That was, um, definitely a temporary plan, um, 'cause we just didn't know where we were in terms of the ability to purchase.
But this, right, this, this would need to, would, will, must be ADA compliant, it has to be accessible, right?
Correct, yeah.
So I guess my, my question to you is, why did you not come back and get an update, put in an updated site plan application to, to ensure that this reflected ADA compliance on your site plan?
Oh, 'cause it was all on the same level, and the building inspector said, um-
Said you didn't need to update your site plan?
Um, he just said that Laura had the right to, to do this, um, so he, that's why we-
Well, she, she, she would have the right to improve her property, but she still have, is subject to the requirements of, of painting an updated site plan, to reflect, to reflect the work that she has the right to do in improving her property, right?
Right, we didn't, we didn't know that, I mean, he, he said that all we needed was an H D R V approval, that's why we, we-
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we did update, we did send our intent to planning board on August twenty-second, um, I mean, we didn't hear back, but then at the same time, around the same time, uh, building inspector said, "She, she has a right to build that as long as we have an H D R V approval," and this is all on the same level, so, you know, we didn't worry.
So the, the plan, so, but you, you did, you did reach out, but you didn't, you reached, you did reach out to the, the planning board, but you didn't reach out with an application to update the site plan, even though you knew that you had to notify, I mean, you, you knew, clearly you understood that you had to communicate with the planning board, because you did, but it wasn't-
Yeah, we had asked, yeah, we had asked, "Do we need to come back to the planning board?" and we didn't hear anything, but then around the same time, the building inspector said, "We just need an H D R V approval," so we thought, "Oh," then we, we didn't need to go to planning board.
Okay, uh, okay.
Sounds like a misunderstanding.
Yes, it certainly happens, you know, especially this, you know, emailing and- And so now-
And then he gave us work permit based on-
To build.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, okay, and so you built, and what we're looking at here-
Is this, this ramp, um, extension, now, um, so there is a lot of-
Is this not ADA compliant?
This is all ADA compliant, what happened was that we, um, so the, uh, our, our staff, when they're working on this, who's much more detailed than I am, because I'm running, you know, dozen projects at the same time, they told me that the ramp fit in this boundary perfectly, uh, but I think what they, um, didn't communicate to me clearly, or working on an assumption that whatever difference that happens here, we could do it with the sidewalk repair, and so the, the, um, just to illustrate what they were thinking, is the, um, photos, so, so for example, you know, we, they saw some examples on, on Village of how the patios were pitched to bring up the grave, like, this is, you know, about-
Before we move into the materials, just, I wanna go back to the approved site plan and this, and the proposed layout here, um, is this the, is, is this the, the same length here?
Same wall, um-
Is this the same wall?
Correct, yeah, we did not change that, um, yeah, what we, what we showcased was just simplifying this-
Right.
-for a few reasons, the neighbor was not crazy about it.
Right, so where I'm getting, what I'm getting at here is in this new one, I just wanna confirm that in the original approved site plan, this wall was at the same-
Correct.
...length from the back of the building, right?
Yes.
Okay, and as it, right, so as reflected here, there's, nothing has changed there, so, but this, you're saying that you, instead, you built this as your ADA compliant ramp, is, is this not an, or, sorry, is, is this not an ADA compliant ramp? We, on our, the approved site plan, this was represented to be ADA compliant?
Right, and that was, that, that is exactly the same length that we're showing now, from here to here was twenty-four feet, you know, from here to here was twenty-four inches, and so-
Well, that's about the stoop, and more about, I'm, I'm-
This. Right, the-
This length here, right, this is your approved site plan, is this an ADA, is this ADA compliant as rendered?
Right, so this, let's go here where the, uh, because this is not showing the ramp per se, it's just showing the roof, right, so, so this, uh, the dimension is not marked, but it, it's twenty-four feet, so this stayed the same, you know, of, of course, the property line stayed the same, so it's, um-
Right, but I, so what I'm asking is, is this an ADA, what was on your site plan, is this ADA compliant as approved?
Yes, as far as, um, the knowledge that, um, they had at that time, that was what was necessary to build, to make up for the, the height that we're going up on the step, they wrapped it around, and then they said, "Okay, we need twenty-four inches to come down," and that's why this is twenty-four feet.
But this doesn't, no, no, this doesn't contemplate the, the stoop here, right, because the, the ADA access was gonna be, was always the side door, this does not, this site plan, the approved site plan, doesn't have the stoop, was not, was not approved with the stoop, the stoop.
The, the difference is that this is all same plane, so the same plane wraps around, and, and the door is here, and the reason why this landing is, is, uh-
Right, I'm not talking about the landing.
Okay.
I need you, I'm, I'm interested to know if this, the approved, does the approved site plan reflect an ADA compliant ramp?
Yes.
Okay.
As, as far as, you know, our understanding of the site, yes, that-
And so what is it that changed, what, what is it that changed that made it impossible for you to build this ramp down there?
Well, so the, this-
And, and bearing, bearing in mind that your approved site plan did not include a stoop.
Right, so the, um, they, they thought that, so in order, they, they, they knew there was some drop here, but their thought was that this would also get torn up during construction, and this, uh-
But why would they, why would they think that, because the approved site plan doesn't, doesn't include the public, what is, uh, public property, it's within the envelope, this is what was approved, so if this is a viable ADA access ramp, why, why, why is it no longer, is it no longer ADA compliant if you build this?
So what happened was that, um, when this got built in-
Mm-hmm.
-it became more evident that this dropped off, to our staff knowledge, this was a vague area, um, because, um, first they expected new plumbing pipes to come through, and they, they had expected, um, this to get torn up in that process, so in their mind, this was something that, that can be addressed down the road, um, and so when, when we brought that, you know, uh, concept to Laura, she did not like the idea of, of pitching the sidewalk to meet with this level, that's, that's where the discrepancy happened.
So there was a plan, so I'm just gonna repeat, like, so I, uh, so that we're on the same page.
Do you wanna, do you wanna see this?
Yeah, so the, I, what you're saying is, is like, this was contingent on an assumption, which happens, you know, in construction, like, you make a certain set of assumptions before construction, you know, and then things always change, because just as construction's happening, they tend to, but your assumption at this point was that there was gonna be, um, additional grading that could happen here.
Yes, that's, that's the explanation that our staff gave us.
Yeah, so, so-
So they, they assumed that there would be disturbance here in the public right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, how much? But, but I, but again, I, they assumed there would be disturbance in the right-of-way, and it, but it would still, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be part of the, um, the building, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a constructed, a structure, right?
Correct, right, it's just an excavation that, that had, they had anticipated during the new pipes.
Right, but, but this, over here, though, this is, how, what is the difference here? Is this six feet?
It's about six, six, uh, seven feet, including the railing.
So it's, it's seven feet onto, so, so are you saying that all the, that the difference here is-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, six feet, uh, the seven feet is from the, the edge of the previous ramp, uh, it's about six feet from the property line.
Six feet, yeah, so it extends six feet beyond the property line, but that's, that, that's, that, it was always assumed that, that your, that your construction of this was going to benefit from putting the structure on the public right-of-way, or on the public property?
No, we, so the explanation that I was given by our staff is that they would just repair the sidewalk, they didn't anticipate-
But the sidewalk is out here, right?
Uh, I'm sorry, patio, the brick patio, yeah, the sidewalk, the concrete sidewalk was not going to be touched, or-
Right.
That, that was their assumption, that, that it would just go through.
That there would be like a grade, a grade change, and then-
Yeah, I think they, they were thinking when, when the brick part is gonna be disturbed or whatever, they would-
That it would be disturbed enough to-
Yeah, they would raise it to certain points, so their ramp will meet that without-
And what is the, what is the height that they expected it to be raised by?
About six inches.
Okay, that's not a small amount.
But, but it was kind of ambiguous, um, I mean, the survey point was showing, um, some parts, but we, we didn't get it from here to here, we got it from here to here, so as far as their understanding was that from here to here was not six inches, but it was, it was, we didn't, we didn't know exactly how this distance was, but we had this information and this information, and, um, they didn't expect it to be six inches from here to here, so, so it dropped further, this, this dropped more than, than they had anticipated, so long story short, um, if I have, um-
Have, have those utilities, has, has this area been disturbed already?
No, it turned out that we didn't need to disturb that area.
And yet, it, you still built out onto it, even though the disturbance that you're referring to didn't take place?
Right, the, because now we had the, we had to compensate for the, for the difference in height.
I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding why this, when you came to us and provided us with this site plan that has the ADA compliant ramp, why, why this doesn't compensate for that?
It's just that this difference from here to here either-
But it's con, it was constant, and it's still the same, right, it wasn't disturbed.
But what they didn't know was how much this dropped from here to here, and, and what that difference was, I think they possibly made it-
They didn't do that before they prepared this?
We, so, we had the survey points, but they had interpreted that, that this would be repaired, and therefore we could make it up in, in the, in the sidewalk, uh, or the, uh, brick patio repair, because at that, in the drawing stage versus, you know, construction stage is different, like, it's, it's a different perception, and so, um, they had certain points, but they didn't have exactly here, and so they just kind of estimated, they didn't know how much this was dropping, they had that point, that point, and that point, and they thought that this could be just, just merged, you know, in, in grade, so-
But, okay, so, so it was gonna be merged and, and graded, and it turns out you couldn't, that's not what you built, though, you didn't build, you didn't disturb it and, and then do what you, the, you, you didn't build what you assumed you were gonna build, you built out onto it, so-
Right, because the owner was not too crazy about that idea, she, she didn't, she didn't like the idea of, um, changing grade here, um, we, we went through so many different options when we were trying to, um, what's the word, um, close the gap between here to here, there were so many confusing ideas, removable ramp, metal, you know, um, uh, you know, wood, or there, there was just so many conflicting ideas, we even thought about turning the ramp here, but then it would not meet the ADA compliance there, and so we went back and forth, and, um, so we, so because we knew that the client was not too crazy about, um, tearing up the brick here, and she said, "And I would have a ledge," you know, so I said, "Yes, you're right," and so, but what that illustrated, um, what this illustrates is that, well, we can have a handrail so that people are not walking into the ledge, so that kind of helped illustrate that, so long story short-
But I guess I do wanna, I do wanna stress, though, that this assumes- But I guess I do wanna, I do wanna stress, though, that this assumes, proceeding building this assumes that you have a, a right, yes, you may have a right to put a front porch on and expose what had been on the interior. That's, yes, but this, this assumes that you, you actually have the right to build on this property.
So, no, I mean, this is what had happened, um...
Which, which was built, right?
So what happened was, um...
Or this, rather.
Right, so what happened was, I, I always knew that we need to go back to the plumbing, I mean, um, uh, the village to purchase that, that portion. Now, whether, you know, because there had been so many ideas and whether it was possible or not and, and calculating this, you know, ramp and where would that hit there, you know, that was also in question. So what, um, we did was, well, the, um, the building owner said, okay, before we get into that conversation, can you work it out with the building inspector to see what is technically feasible? And then, so we had did this and we left, you know, this kind of, um, um, o, open and we had asked her to come and see it and see if that was acceptable. And she said, yes, it's acceptable, um, you know, just put this last piece on.
I'm sorry, are you saying that, that the, Charlotte Mountain, uh, said that this ramp and that this portion that we're, that is on public property was, was acceptable?
But she did say you do need to get village board's approval, so she did say that. What we did was, we had emailed her and said, we just did this mock-up just to show you because this is easily removable, because it can be dismantled, that's, you know, like half-day job. And so we didn't, and, and also...
Is this all temporary, this, all these, because these look like the same piece?
Right, this, the reason why we did this, um, because we, we saw that this was, this ramp was working out and then, you know, so Charlotte said, yes, so this is in terms of technical standpoint, you know, this portion is acceptable. I mean, I'm sorry, she, she said, you know, how she would resolve that and then we talked about railing and we thought, okay, so we just finish the railing and then, um, you know, just go forward, the village, um...
You finished the railing?
Right, we finished the railing because of also the safety issue and such. And also we were working, my, my fault, of course, is that I was working, I didn't think too hard about it and I should've and I, I apologize, but for me, what I was going by was the precedence on our building and that, you know, village board was kind enough to let us finish our front stoop before we finalize the purchase. And so we, we, I had mistaken that...
But you had already, I, as I understand, I, and I'm, is it, my memory is that, my, my understanding is that you, before you came to us with this plan, you had asked to, you had asked the village board to sell this property, the front property to Laura because she desired outdoor seating and there was a whole, right? So you had already asked for, for that purchase and had been declined. So you knew that this wasn't available to you and that's why you, that's why, that's why this plan is like this, right?
Right, and we, we, we also thought that the village would be, um, try to work with us in terms of providing ADA ramp because any other solution other than raising the brick...
But, but you had that solution here. The approved site plan included an ADA compliant access.
Right, except that it dropped, the, the grade dropped here in reality, so...
Well, that just means that this isn't actually, the approved site plan doesn't, doesn't have an ADA compliant ramp, right? I mean, it sounds like, I mean, from what you're saying, what has changed between, um, what is this? May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and now, is that it turns out this actually isn't an accurate rendering and that this isn't ADA compliant?
Well, our, our staff thought that it did and, and they thought it, it, it met the ADA compliance.
I think sometimes what happens is like it's a level of abstraction earlier on in the process where I'm just playing, you know, I'm just sort of trying to understand how this kind of mistake can happen. It's like there's a level of abstraction that happens when things are early in the process and as you said, sometimes people sort of roll through some assumptions that you can massage this minor grade difference in this way. And it does set, like, my understanding from what Judy's saying is, is that you, you, the op, the operating assumption for that, for this site plan was that there would be a massaging of that brick that would make it relevant, that would be necessary. And that was an assumption whether, you know, hindsight is twenty-twenty. We all learn from each project, right, so...
But I guess, I guess my point about that assumption, though, is you made assumptions about your site plan actually did depend upon changes to property not owned by, by Laura Bergman.
But I didn't know that, I didn't know that and, I mean, our, our staff, um, they, they, in their mind, this was a gray area, but this was a foggy area that, that we can address, um, you know, down the road, not, not knowing like what, you know, how much this was likely to be. So it, I think that was something that kind of got sent into the future, you know, like the site condition, we'll deal with the site condition later.
Okay, but then jumping ahead, this was built and a permanent railing, I mean, this isn't a, I mean, the wood thing you can take out, but this, the metal railing is one continuous piece, so that doesn't look like, that doesn't look like, oh, this is just like a beta test that I'm gonna present to Charlotte Mountain.
With the, based on our conversation, you know, and my past experience of, you know, being allowed to just build a stoop, what was necessary to access the site, you know, that was, I just thought that we were just close enough and...
That the village would sell this?
That they would be pro ADA access, I didn't, I didn't...
Well, I, I don't think that the, I don't think, I don't think that the, the village, I mean, certainly the planning board is pro ADA access and I, I don't think that there's anybody on the historic district of Yiddish zoning board or the, you know, any of the village board members who are not proponents of ADA access, right? But the, as my, my, I'm pointing out here is that you had asked to purchase this for, you had asked if Laura Bergman could purchase this two years ago and that request was declined, but you went ahead and built out onto it and installed a, a permanent structure.
It's not permanent, that, that can be, that can be taken down. We didn't, we did, we did jump to the assumption that, you know, so that village board would, would be accommodating because it's an ADA ramp, that we didn't see any other solution, um, between all the other restrictions that I was trying to deal with. And so we wanted, we definitely wanted to illustrate that there was a simple solution, that's for sure. The reason why we just continued this is that, is for safety. You know, we didn't wanna put cones out there and we can take it down, you know, we can take it down, that, that's okay. That's all right. I'm not, I'm not opposing...
So that's a matter for the, I mean, that is a matter for the, the code enforcement officer.
Right, yeah, exactly, so we had talked about what are the open items to make this work technically and I didn't think too hard because the village board was accommodating on our building. I didn't think ADA ramp is more important than front stoop and therefore I just jumped to the conclusion that, that, that would be a different case than say, um, Laura tried to buy patio for, you know, a covered deck. So I, I thought that was two different issues.
All right.
Yeah, I, I thought this was just, um, it, you know, ADA ramp is a, is a priority, you know, for everybody. So that's, that's why I didn't think too far, thinking that the village would oppose to it. So it's my, my fault for assuming that way and I had, I was going by the precedence on our office building. That's the wrong jump, like, my mind jumped so fast because we were just trying to find a solution. Laura didn't like the brick idea and, you know, um, we couldn't go cut down, you know, and lower that ramp by the apartment. I felt that I was stuck between rock and a hard place and we pent mind over so many different solutions, like metal grading, removable. And we, we talked about so many options that I said, okay, so why don't I just illustrate this and if it's feasible, I did not think that the village would oppose to making the ADA ramp possible.
It's just, I, this is, it's not just illustrated, you built it, I guess that's, that's the point, right?
I'll take it down, I'll take it down, that's okay.
All right, well, that's, I mean, that's, that's for, for Charlotte Mountain about that. And so now for this, though, um, so we can't, we can't approve, I mean, you're here to talk about these sort of proposed changes. These aren't changes that we can approve without an application. Um, and in order for that application to be complete, this would have to be on Laura Bergman's property, right? This, this, uh, the stoop option, the stoop is already on Laura Bergman's property.
Yes.
Right, so, so this, the village board would have to sell this, right?
Right.
So, well, this is, that's, if the village board does not sell this piece to you, to, to Laura, okay? So you take this off, now you have about this much, um, from the street level to your ramp metal. All right, so now, assuming you're gonna disturb the, uh, pipes or whatever and rebuild this...
But she said that, that's like...
Yeah, we don't need to disturb the pipes anymore.
There's no law or need to disturb. This is, this is the, the public property that no longer needs to be disturbed.
So now basically you just, you have this much difference from the street level to the ramp, right?
That, that's true, but it's a foot for every inch, right?
Yes, and the one thing, the, the ramp, left for the ramp.
Six inches, that's why they come out, six feet, okay? So now you have six inches from the, uh, street level, the brick place, to your existing ramp, assuming you take this off, just hang here, you have six inches difference.
Yes, about, about, okay. Now here's my, the reason that we didn't pursue brick patio manipulation is that it is risky in a sense that the brick settles. And so we didn't want it to be a trip hazard, which is still a liability on village property. And so we just, we explored every single possibility and, and that's why we did this, yes. I, the mock-up that we had done early was this and then based on our review with the building inspector, we thought, okay, so then railing and this piece and we're good. And my, I just jumped to the conclusion, why would village oppose an ADA ramp? This is the only solution that I saw at that moment.
Hey, did you, did you contemplate taking, taking six feet from, from the entrance into the tourist home?
That is a hydrostatic slab that is very complicated and it's like two layers of woven metal, um, and eight-inch big concrete. It is, it is a massive thing.
I'm sorry, what, the, the wall here or the, the sur, the surface?
Because, yeah, we were designing it to, so that...
Is this not the same grade as, is this, is this slab not the same...
It is the same grade as that, yes.
As this, right?
Right, now this is designed, this slab is designed to the, the flood requirement, the village flood requirement. And so if we lowered that, that meant...
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying lower this, right? I'm saying make this, because, how, how many feet is, is this? From ins, from the interior wall? Like, how far would you have to come in in order to, six...
Oh, about the same, about the same, yeah.
Yeah.
So what we didn't...
And so if you, if you started here, at, with the same level here, would that not give you the, the rise and run? Because here, right, the ra, the rise stops here, right? And so from here to...
Yeah, and then do another ramp inside?
No, I'm not, I'm not proposing another ramp inside. I'm proposing that, I'm proposing that you shift the rise back six feet and asking you where that gets you, right? Because this, if this is, if this is, is flat here, it sounds like you can take out, you can take out six feet of approach from inside the tourist home and move, move the ramp back.
So are you saying that take out a slab here and, and ramp it down to meet a lower landing?
Are, are you, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that because my understanding from what you said earlier is that this slab is the same, at the same level as this...
Right, right.
This line that meets the doorway, so you're not, because it's ADA compliant, right? So you wouldn't, you wouldn't be bringing the slab down.
Yeah, we, we, uh, I mean, right now we couldn't do it at all, but even at that time, that's like...
Why couldn't you do that at all? Because it's not at the, it's not higher.
Wouldn't that raise it, so if you shifted this whole, this whole thing back six, five, six feet? Wouldn't it raise it up higher than where this existing slab is?
Yeah, you have to raise it, you know, it's the same, it's the same, it's the same height.
No, currently it's the same, this and this are currently the same, X and, or whatever, this and this are the same. So because you're coming from here, you see what I'm saying? So if you, if you take this and you just shift it over and you're, this, assuming that...
Actually, all you have to do here is shift this, because this is where the grade starts. So this line here, the line, so all you have to do is shift this back. And according to Judy, this space right here, on the, on the south end of that little B M, is the same grade, same grade as that, so you could move it back.
Got it, so this landing, so instead of having the landing on the outside of this wall, you're saying why isn't the landing on, why didn't this, this wall?
No, I'm saying this should be, the, that this wall needs to move back. This is the way to do it, to take, to make sure that you can...
I hear you, yeah, move this landing in here. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't perceive that that's the landing in the...
Or just move the landing back, yeah, and reduce the interior space, right?
Yeah, so what you're reducing here is the apartment here.
Yeah, you're taking away...
The entrance, the, the, that's bill, whatever you call it, here.
Yeah, this hallway gets shorter.
That's what, um, right now, this is, if you knew like what it took to build that slab, um, it's, it's massive, it's a massive concrete tub that goes up and around.
Right, but this slab, does the slab, if the slab is at the same grade or the same height, right, as this out here, we assume it is because this is an ADA ramp, so it has to be the same level, right? So you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be making changes to the slab. What you would do is you would be making changes to the wall.
But you're saying that is the wall connected to the slab?
The wall is connected to the slab and it is, um, major undertaking. It, it would be a very, very costly, and so this, this is all integral. This is all integral to the slab, it's...
It's like the bathtub thing that you...
Yeah.
That I kind of understand what you're saying a little, I think, I don't, without seeing the detail, I think I know what you mean.
And we would have to take this out and that's, you know, connected to the footing and, um, so if we move that wall, then we would have to rip up a hydrostatic slab.
So you deem that option of, you deem the option of moving, shifting the wall back to provide access within the approved site plan boundaries, you deem that to be too burdensome, right?
So we, we, so when we were designing originally, we, we didn't think about...
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I know, I'm, I'm saying at this point in time...
Once it was built.
I'm, I'm saying going perspectively, like, this is, it is an option to shift this back and take the six feet from the entry foyer of your tourist home.
Yeah, it, it is...
And you're telling me that that isn't an option that you can, that you or your, your, your client can withstand because it is too burdensome?
Yeah, it would be huge hardship, yeah. Yeah, this is, I should show you what it looked like before the concrete wall. It was massive.
I think what I, I think what, what I can see from that explanation is that, or what I am understanding from that explanation is that a lot was invested in creating this bathtub construction for flood or whatever and so that there was, um, the client decided that, no, I'm not, you know, once I've invested this much in creating this flood-resistant thing, I don't, I, you know, it's all a matter of like, we're kind of, as designers, we're middle people between a few different people and it's, it's, um...
I mean, I do appreciate, I appreciate that idea.
But I'm just trying to understand, because I do understand that like it is sometimes you are stuck between a rock and a hard place and it felt to the, to the owner that this was, as Stephanie was saying, too burdensome.
As an option at this time.
At that time, once it was already all, because you're saying the metal goes up...
Right, it was all a...
It's like the slab does this so that if you're demoing that, you...
You compromise the integrity of the, right?
So, so then they, so that's what then, yeah, set this in motion as maybe that this could be... an option, with all its issues.
Now, another option, have you, have you considered a lift?
Electric and flood plane, so that
But, but, it, but I understand that there's a bathtub here in the flood plain to protect the mechanicals, right?
But, but not the electric, uh, the chairlift, they don't get used either, um, we've observed, and, um, and it's a long story, it's a very big
But if you, if you had one, and you had people who wanted to visit the tourist home, or the cafe, that needed ADA access, they would use the lift, because that would be their option.
So the lift will be right here, it will be undercover.
It would be, the lift would be undercover, and it would be, it would be
Just right here, and without this ramp.
It would be at a, and it would be at a height, right, that you designed to be out of the flood plain, because it's the bathtub, so
But bathtub is in here, and we're still in the flood plain here.
It would be, it would be here, not in there.
Yeah, it would still be
Well, but it, it will, you know, if you add the here, it will be covered.
But it, it would, but if, but if the flood plain is this, is across, and we're talking about height, right, you're, the height here is important, right, so if it's, if it is at a height that is above the flood line, then it won't be a problem. And you have the, and you have the real estate here to do that and make that happen.
We did consider that from the very beginning, and that was set aside.
Why, why was that, well, I, right, I understand you considered it at the beginning, right, and, but you chose this option, that's, and that, but now we're not at the beginning, we're here, and we have to remediate this issue where you don't have this property in front, and so we're sort of, you know, we're shopping these, these solutions. So an option is to work within the approved site plan footprint, shifting back the wall, but we've noted that doing so would compromise the, and you said it will compromise the integrity of this, uh, this slab and this, this, um, flood, flooding, uh, floodproof solution, right? And so we propose that if you install a lift, and, and that lift is maintained at, you know, mechanicals for the lift and the lift itself stored at a, at a height out of arm's way, out of the, you know, that, that's, that's a potential option, right?
That would, yes.
So at this point in time, is, is that
I will have to look into code in terms of, are we allowed to have an electric powered, you know, motor in the flood zone, I, I will look into that, but
Good heavens, Juhi, people park their cars down there, I mean, there's somebody with a Prius down there, that's an electric powered motor, right?
It's true, I mean, I guess you can't prevent everything.
I mean, and people have mechanicals in their basements down there, there's, I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing to, well, but code, that's not a code issue, there's nothing in the code that says you can't have a, a lift in a, in
Lift, true, lift in a flood zone, I have to look, no, so the, I have to say, we, we were hired by another client who has put in the lift, and they asked me to take it out, because nobody uses it.
Well, that's a different thing, that's not a code issue, that is, that's, that become, that for them, it was no longer a reasonable business option for them, and their circumstances are clearly different from these, right?
From ADA friendly point of view, ramps versus lift, ramp is much more accessible and friendlier, so like, imagine this, you know, let's say this was, um, I don't know, we bring this whole thing down, and we just have, you know, oh, let's say
No, you don't need to bring this whole thing down, you just, just this narrow bit.
But you, this whole, you would then All you would have, you actually could scrap this entire, and repurpose this.
Just this, this, this little bit, here, this narrow bit here, and then, uh, the lift will be somewhere here, so it's actually not on the ground.
It'll be back underneath the, the
Yeah, it's, it's really whatever the, uh, the, the difference is from the ramp to your platform, it will be like this. Right now, if we take this bit away, you have this much, so your lift, assuming I have a lift, they, they will be hanging somewhere here, not on the ground. Alright?
Well, it can, the lift can hang as high as you need, as high as you need it to.
So, yeah, so for
And lifts, I, I have to differ, ADA compliant lifts are ADA friendly, they're there to serve people who
It's not user friendly.
They're there to ser-
It is not user friendly.
But you, that's not what you said, you said it wasn't ADA friendly, and they are built to be, they're built in service to ADA compliance, and
It is an eyesore, and it is not used, um, it is not used, people avoid it, people avoid it.
Well, another, you know, what I'm saying is just, you know, get the, your service people lift the wheelchair up or something, I don't know.
That's against the code too.
Yeah, it's a
Yeah, you can't, you, you're not allowed to touch them, you have to self serve.
Right. And actually, there was a story of a guy who would, uh, who was on a wheelchair, chair all the time, but he goes to all the restaurants, wherever he could reach, and then he would sue them for not the ADA.
Oh, yeah.
It was really, it really is, you know, when you say, there are people who are really picky, so therefore, uh, even it's used one time, if it's at the right time, then you're okay, if it's not used, uh, at that one time, and then you get sued, you got more problems. So therefore, there are a lot of things to think about, and then there are people who are doing those kind of things.
Well, it's, and there's a reason, it's ADA compliant, because it's, it's the Americans with Disabilities Act, it is a law, it's compliant with the law, it's lawful, and you know, it, the question of it being an eyesore is really not, it can't be, it, it can't be an issue, because it's, it's you
Well, yes, let's put that aside, now, strollers, you know, parents with strollers would definitely prefer to use this, the, the lift.
I, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure, but, but our issue isn't parents with strollers here, our issue is making sure that it's accessible
But they could, they could say it's a disability, they could claim that it's there, you know, anyway, but, long story short.
I certainly hope not, I mean, that's, being a parent with a stroller isn't a disability.
But if you don't have this, this long bit, you can park the strollers.
Yeah, that's true. I think part of this is also just trying to figure out what, you know, I think sometimes it feels like, like, we're not here to hold things up, right? Like, part of this is just because of the precedent setting, and I think if, you know, I think we had a situation on Main Street that had a similar kind of access issue with ADA, and it was a business, a change of views, and we, as a board, you know, we followed through and, and made sure that it was ADA compliant per the code, so I think we wanna help the client, the owner, and, and you representing the owner achieve that ADA compliance in a way that is fair to the previous applicants and any applicants that come after, because if we make this exception, then it's not fair to the person who we spent the last few months, or the applicant prior. So I think if we, yeah, I think that's kind of like where I think the suggestion to consider at least, um, despite the definite drawbacks, I, I, I I do, I, I sort of, I understand the aesthetic issue, or, and more than, of more importance than an aesthetic issue with a, with a lift, is, um, what you're saying, the experiential issue, the fact that sometimes they're, they feel like they're a little bit tucked back, they're not as like physically present to somebody who needs them, so I, I totally
But, but it could be, um, but, having said that, it could be right there at the front, right? Because you can access it by foot using the, the front steps here.
Yeah.
And this
It could be right at the front, is what you're saying.
Yeah, it could be right, right at the front.
Yes, no, no, and I think that would be the preferable spot.
It would be right at the front, easily accessible to those who, who wanna use it.
I think, I, my, 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 just to sort of take, take this sort of explanation that was given as to why that was not a preferred option, you know, I, I understand, like, there's this idea that, well, this is just built, and it's physical, it's grade, and you just go, you continue, you know, and it's like, almost like, well, the chair sometimes, you know, you kind of have to maneuver and press a button and so forth, which, again, that's, they're both acceptable, they both meet the code, so they are both acceptable scenarios, and I think our feelings about one method versus the other are valid, but at the same time, we just have to kind of do what the, you know, what we're, what we have to do in terms of what is allowed, if that makes sense, which, and this is clearly, even though there was a misunderstanding because of, you know, the discussions with the, between you and the owner, and the HDRB, and the inspector, that this would maybe fly, it, it doesn't seem like there's, I mean, perhaps, I mean, is there a path of least, I think what we're, sorry, I'm saying, I'm taking a really long time to say, there is, what we're trying to do is find the path of least resistance, so to speak, to help this application slash physical structure move forward.
And using what you have at this time, because you don't have, you don't have the, this front sort of apron.
Yes.
You don't have that, so the way to make it work with what you don't, with what you do have, which is within this original, originally approved boundary, right, is, is A, you can, you can shift this ramp back, or you can modify things up front, so that this becomes, so that you have a lift here, and, and Juhi, you do beautiful work, I can't imagine that a lift on a building that you would do would be unsightly, right? An ice, I think you said an eyesore, I, I actually beg to differ, because I've seen your work.
Thank you. But now, my, my thinking was like, I, you know, the reason why, and I, I apologize that we put on the railing, because I did that just because I thought, okay, we, we were just, um, number one, safety, I didn't wanna just put cones in there, because teenagers, you know, or mischievous young folks, they move them and da, 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 and so we thought, okay
But there's one right there, that one's still there.
Um, anyway, so long story short, and I apologize for putting the railing in, I thought that was a safer reason, we will take it off if necessary. Now, my thought was like, but why would village make it difficult for us to have an ADA, why wouldn't they support us in providing an ADA ramp?
We can't, but we, you know, we can't solve for that, right, like, and, so
So why, but can you, can the village answer that question, why?
We can't answer that question.
Why are they making it hard for us to provide an ADA ramp, for the patrons, for the people, like equitable access?
Well, but Juhi, I, I don't think that's, I don't think that that's fair to char- characterize the villages being, being difficult, because
But we were wondering, why?
Two years ago, you came here, and we worked with you to put in, the planning board worked with you, and so I don't think that, I mean, I don't think that you can say that we're being difficult about, about the situation that is here, I mean, we can't solve for the fact that you don't, that Laura Bergman doesn't own this property.
But it's in the village power to help us right here.
Right, that's, it's not, it's not, yeah, our
Village, but not the client.
It's not the client, I think this, my, my point here is that this proposal, this, this proposed use, or, you know, struc- construction, is not something, I mean, we can't help you with that, so we can only help you within, within this, right?
Yes, okay.
And so, the things that we could do, are we could, we could shift, shift it back, what we can do for you is we can say, ah, update your site plan to this, based on the property that Laura Bergman owns, and, and come up with a solution within this, within this defined space.
Right.
Without reference to the public, publicly owned property.
So, alright, and I greatly appreciate you being solution oriented, I greatly appreciate, because, yes, um, uh, it is good to think out of the box, and I, I love that, um, so, alright, so then, I think the solution is, we just, for, I think the right time for us to come back to the planning board is to have further discussion with the village
Yeah, you really, yes, you need to resolve
Understand why, why they, why, you know, why is, because it, it feels
Well, can, have you, have you applied for, have you applied to the state for the variance that you would need to get to, 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 to use this shortened area, was it the
This is, yeah, this is, this is my question here, because if you have six inches difference
This would be off, it's so little, right?
Right.
And so there is an avenue for you to submit an application to the state, and have you done that, have you, have you done that?
And then basically, yeah.
There is a snag there, in my opinion, because we have to prove to the state that it's not technically feasible to fit an ADA ramp, or provide, you know, so provide an ADA ramp.
It, it, well, but you've just said to us that technically, it is not feasible to put an ADA compliant ramp within this space.
Right.
Within, on the, using the approved site plan.
Right, so we could, we could try that, uh, there are two things, we could lose a lot of time, Laura has limited time in terms of her beer and wine license. We have very limited time, um, now, it could get dragged in, into state, it could be six months, it could be six months before they open our case.
The long process, yeah.
So when, when was this built?
Um
A few months ago.
I emailed, uh, Ms. Charlotte, um
There was a, I emailed her
I emailed you
There was a email you, uh, you sent today, I think.
It's not too long ago, um, let's see.
Can, can you use a, like, uh, suspended, not suspended, but you can see sometimes when you get the curb of the street, and then people have this thing there just to drive out, do you have one of those extensions, uh, and then have rails, it's, it's like a, like a, like a gang
Oh, like those, those temporary proper ramps?
Yeah, like a gang, when you get onto the boat, you have one of those things, and then, you know, when you have the wheelchair coming, you just
I, I don't know, I mean, that, that's a, I mean, that, I don't know, that's a solution that would have to be, I mean, you would, you would know, you would know better than I am, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know, I
Yeah, we talked about that, we talked about that too, yeah.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's
That's like a, it would be like a drop, right, a hatch.
Yeah, yeah. She didn't accept it, because number one
Laura Bergman didn't
No, no, building inspector.
Building inspector, okay, it doesn't comply, yeah.
Because, right, the, um, the person needs to access the spaces with that assistance.
Without assistance, yeah, with some ease, right?
With some ease, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, but, but people can, I mean
Well, but I think, yeah, I know what you're saying, for some, for some people, it might be easy, but I think the point is, right, under the code, that, that sort of an, an implement, that solution is
Vote is effort, right?
Solution is not
Yeah.
As implemented, isn't it?
Right, Ms. Charlotte's
It really is just, you know, one of these things, it's, it's really so little, and you can get it up.
But going, you know, going, going back to here, we're
Yeah, anyway, I'm trying to think of solutions, without the
What is the
People have
The new one, or?
Oh, no, 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 it's the old one, the old one.
Yeah, that, that's the one you're looking at.
So, so you've said that this, this actually, in the clutch, isn't ADA compliant, because it, it doesn't take
But we thought it was
No, you may have thought, but it really is actually in, after everything shakes out, this approved, approved site plan isn't ADA compliant. But, there is an avenue to the state where you can apply for a variance
To do a steeper slope?
To, to build this as, you know, and as a, and it would, as you point out, it would wind up being steeper, right, because of the six inches, right?
Yeah, it's six inches, yeah, so
You're missing the six feet there, and, so you have said that there are standards that you need to meet at the state, right?
Right, I would have to illustrate that it's not technically feasible, and it would be
Right, and, and, and it sounds, from what you've said to us, it sounds like it isn't technically feasible
Within the property line?
Within the approved site plan, right, within the property line, so, so it sounds like you, you meet that criteria.
Right. Right, but when you look at these photos, if the village is assisting us
Right, but we're, yeah, but the village isn't assisting you.
You cannot assume the village is gonna assist.
So are there, is there other criteria you need to meet at the state, for a state variance?
That's, that's my understanding, is that, um, we have to prove that it's not technically feasible.
Well, you, I think that you've demonstrated to us that it's not technically feasible, right?
That there is moving back, it's not feasible.
We've, because we've said, we've, we've, we've proposed the idea that you shift it back, you, you shift it back, this, you shift this back by six feet, and you've explained that's not technically feasible, right, okay?
So, in order, so, basically, in order to fit this length, to meet that six inches, the ramp has to be steeper. That's, that's basically it, so what, what you, that's the variance, that's it. How, how much degrees you're gonna add by reducing the, you know, by adding the six inches, before it was like this, now you have to go like this.
Right.
So, you know, you have to end here, basically, what, what, I think what we're trying to say is that the village, right now, you cannot assume the village is gonna sell you that, that bit, and, you know
Right, I mean, we, we can't, we can't game out with you, the assumption that the village is doing that, and it has nothing to do with whether or not the village supports or doesn't support, it has an issue about ADA compliance, it simply, it's property that doesn't, isn't owned by Laura Bergman, right? So that your options include, from the top, you can shift the ramp back six feet, you could get a lift, or you could apply for a variance from the state.
Forget the
Demonstrating that it's not technically feasible, given the fact that you have this integrated, this membrane and this integrated wall system, so you can't, you can't and this integrated wall system. So you can't, you can't back that up, right? I don't know that, and, and the lift, that's not a ramp, so that wouldn't fall into this criteria. So it, it seems that, if, is that the only, that's the only criteria that you have to, to prove?
That it's technically not feasible.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and so.
And is there a reason, so several months, I mean, several months have already passed and you could have applied.
Right, because we had, we had discussed so many options internally before we came to you.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's why many months have passed.
Okay.
Now, so we were.
So if you start now, at least get it in, you know, who knows? It may take six months, it may, it may take six weeks, it might take a week. I don't, who knows?
What about, what about, um, a combo option of purchasing the lift temporarily?
But we have the, we have the working ramp right now. Um, I mean, so this is our ask to the village.
Yeah. Yeah, obviously the.
Our ask to the village is we have a working ramp now. Can you please give us a TCO so that Laura can open? Now, as far as, you know, Laura, her understanding of moving forward and being solution oriented, she sees three options. One, that village helps her, you know, implement this ADA ramp with the purchase of the, the small piece there. Leasing it so that it's not a permanent sale or the brick. She's not thrilled about the brick, but it's an option. So those are the faster solutions rather than going to the state.
Right, okay, good. So, but Juhi, we can't comment on the village selling or leasing.
Okay, yes.
I mean, so I guess what we're trying to do here is like, game out, game out the options that are available to you using Laura Bergman's property.
Yeah, right, yeah. Thank you, thank you for thinking out of the box. And I think those are, you know, very clever. The lift, I know for sure from real life experience, observation, they don't work. They are Band-Aids that, that people don't use.
But now, so but her, her, her Laura's suggestion of a hybrid solution, which I totally, I think that's, that's great.
Well, sorry, I missed that.
But I was just wondering, like, because, well, maybe this is, well, honestly, like, I'm not really sure what will take, what would be faster, um, is, um, applying to the state for the variance for this, or working through the mechanics of these three options uh, with the village. So since both of these scenarios might take some long amount of time and be costly in terms of time because of the licenses and, um, time is money as we all know, what about installing, um, a lift?
As a temporary Band-Aid for a while, as you point out, maybe on, it's a Band-Aid, right?
It could be like ten thousand dollar expense on Laura, you know.
Well, I don't know, I mean, again.
Because we have a working ramp, so our ask, uh, to the village board was as a temporary.
How much is she spending though? I mean, how much, I, I would ask, and, yeah, I mean, you don't have to tell me, but I would, you're saying that that's too expensive, but already three months have passed and a lot of time and money has been spent preparing alternatives, preparing this coming before the board, right? So, so it's, you know, I, I think that, I think at the end, any of these is gonna be, is arguably a false economy, right? There's no way to get through this without, she's already spending money, right? And I, I think that if you're a lift, purchasing a, a temporary lift is a, it's a cap, it's an expense you can capitalize as a business option, right?
Okay, potentially, I don't know.
Right, but listen, please, so, but the, the hybrid solution being, purchase that, get, get up and running, get your business open. It's one of the, the costs of doing business within the property that she has now while working out the question of the purchase of the property or lease the property.
These other avenues of, the village will allow you to leave.
The, the, or also simultaneously applying to the state for the ability to make, uh, make acceptable under state code, the, the previously understood to be ADA compliant ramp, which actually isn't ADA compliant within the, within the boundary.
I guess what feels difficult about that hybrid solution potentially I'm seeing now is that it's not just the cost of installation or purchase of the electric, um, lift.
To get power out there and.
Well, yeah, and you would also ha, uh, I, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure, I haven't thought about it long enough, but, and I, I know you've thought about it way more than us, so, but if you did, the only place to put the lift, if you put the lift here, you would have to, you would have to demo this whole thing, right?
Yeah.
To get proper access. So that's, right, you'd have to demo what's existing.
Yeah. If you, if you put the lift here, you would only, you would only have, you would take this out.
Just right here. Take this out, so just demo this piece that you've said you're prepared to demo.
And you might. Just, you're prepared to demo anyway.
Yeah.
And put a lift right at, at the front.
Just temporarily, a little lift to meet the gap, so.
And, and changes might have, I mean, because in, in this, in the ideal scenario here, within the, within the pocket here, you're gonna get granted a state variance and you'll have to redo this ramp anyway to make.
With the state variance, but that is.
With the state.
That is assuming that the state will approve.
Yeah, right, assuming, which is a long shot.
Right.
I think this is the better, I mean, but I don't know.
But, but in the meantime, you'll have, you'll continue to have ADA compliant access,
Access.
Which will not be an eyesore because it's being implemented by Juhi.
Thank you for the color, but I'm just thinking, why is the village making it so hard?
Yeah, that's not.
Oh, but during the. The bottom line, why is the village making it so hard when the solution is right in front of us? So, okay, so let me just ask.
I don't, I feel like we're working really hard to try to come up with a solution here.
No, there's a work, okay, now, let me just. Not us, the solution is here, that's the one.
Well, the village meeting the village.
Well, this is, the, meaning the village board, but, yeah.
Right.
Because of precedent and.
But it really, but right now, you cannot assume that they will agree.
We can't, we can't answer that question.
That's right. If they don't agree, then you're losing the time.
Yes, it, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's basically what we're looking at.
Okay.
We don't know. I mean, maybe we will go to them and, I, I don't know.
Uh, the village, I mean.
Maybe, maybe they will agree.
Well, but, I mean, I.
So the ask, the last ask to the village board was, because we have a working ramp here right now,
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Will you lease us this piece until we resolve it? I think that is the simplest, simplest, that's just, that's our ask.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, I think that's simpler than putting the, the ramp, like lifting this out, which is in a perfect working order, even if the village leases us this temporarily, that is more of a system the business owner.
So what's the temporary, I guess, but what's?
Until we, we figure out whether, whether we do the sidewalk, you know, ramp or go to the state. Now, she has limited time, if she gets a temporary wine and beer license, she has a very limited time to transfer to permanent.
Yeah.
We don't have time to go to the state.
Okay, so basically what she's saying is allow this to stay to give her the license.
Yeah. But, but that's not our. But that's not, that's not our burden also, 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 wait, but also, I have to say, if she has lim, if, if Laura Bergman has limited time,
Okay, then let's finish, or we can't do that.
Put in a lift, because that won't take much time to do at all. So, I mean, so.
Oh, my goodness.
You can, all right, right? Because shifting, shifting the ramp back, right, that's probably gonna take longer, right? Right? The application to the state's gonna take a long time, you assume. I, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I'm not familiar with that process.
And, and, and if, if the state does allow us.
But the lift.
That's the most costly to remove.
It will still be very costly to remove that and then change the, change the thing.
But, you, you've already built this.
So it's, this whole thing is already there. The cost, if you get a lift, the immediate and very obvious cost, the cost is the lift.
Is the cost of the lift, right?
Yeah, but it will gain time and the problem, and then it's probably a, a better solution.
If you can afford her license.
He can open, yeah, right away.
Until it's resolved with the.
I know, I know you think it's, you know, you, and Laura thinks it's ugly, even I think it might be ugly.
Well, unless the.
I don't think it's gonna be ugly.
No, no, just, no, it's ugly, it doesn't mean, it's just something that's clumsy, it's made right there, yeah.
A pender, yeah.
Uh, that's, you know, that's, that's the obvious thing. It's not the prettiest thing. It's not, that's not used the ugly word, but just say it's not prettiest. However, that's the fastest solution. It will only gain time and everything. I, I, you know, the other thing is the damn board cannot be done and all this stuff.
Right, right.
And then when you think even they give you the variance, you still have to rip everything out and so on. And then assuming the village agrees to do this brick thing, if they do, and then you, you build like, like this gradually up to meet that six inches, so will be a slope like this.
Right.
Well, you know, then, that would, that, that would, that solution would mean that the village and Laura Bergman would end up sharing liability for the ADA compliant ramp and for, for the maintenance of it and anything that would go wrong. The, the railing that you see here, right? There would, there would need to be, right, there would be a ramp here, so I'm assuming it would still need, you'd need something to connect people from turning your ankle off on your, onto, on the lusks property.
Right, you do need a, yeah.
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 And if that is supposed to extend across the front, then you've got the same issue on this side.
So it's just a. This is, the, the, the brick will go up gradually from.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I totally, yeah, yeah, no, I understand that option, but that's the, that means that there is this uneven.
Uneven, you know, settling.
Perspectively settling bricks, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And that will be the village's, you know, liability. I mean, I, I don't think that a, I don't think a hybrid solution where the, where the village and Laura Bergman co-own, the, co-own the solution is something that, um.
That's a good point.
I don't, I, I mean, I just don't think that the planning board, I mean, I don't think, like, when I consider that, I don't think that I could support that as a, as a, as a viable option going forward as a permanent solution, because.
But wouldn't it just depend on whether they put a legal term in that contract of the lease to say that we're not liable? Like, the village would just have to, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but.
Well, well, as between Laura Bergman and the village, right?
And the, and the village, yeah, yeah. They would just have to put a clause that says, a lease.
Well, that probably, the lawyer's fee probably costs you more than the, the lift.
Right, right, so, so there are more.
For the leasing.
I have to say, like, Laura is not too thrilled about the brick idea anyway.
But third party plans.
Yeah.
Okay, so, looking from ten thousand feet.
Yeah.
All right.
Third, we have a, a very, like, without understanding village's reason why they would not sell this, because that, that is the simplest solution. Now, that's, yes, if that's not for your answer, you have to ask the village board. Um, looking at, from a very practical point of view, I just don't understand why we would go through so much trouble to get a non-ADA ramp when it is feasible if two parties come to an agreement.
I think the key, the key to your question is, is, is about the village, right? Or the, the village board, not the planning board.
Yeah.
And the reason we can't, and so we can't really answer that because we are kind of penned in by what our volunteering
Yeah.
uh, role is, which is to, you know, make sure that things follow the code as we read it and interpret it. And I think we cannot make a re, I, this, I'm, 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 I'm not super experienced with this, but I think the reason we cannot make a recommendation, well, first of all, it's not our role right now in this point because there's, until the application is in, is because of the fact of the ownership situation, right? Like, because we can't legally make a, I, I don't know this, but I don't think we can legally make a recommendation to the village board about a property that is not the owner's property, you know what I mean? Like, we can't recommend, oh, yeah, you can use, you should allow this use on this adjacent property that the owner doesn't use. I don't think we can make that recommendation as part of.
No, no, I don't, I don't, it's not, that's fine.
So, yeah.
Another thing is, I can see from the village point of view, okay, is that this, if they approve, say, okay, let's sell it to Laura, or let's lease it, it is after the fact that this thing is built. People will look at that and say, okay, so if we built something without the.
Let's say that we didn't know what we were doing.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then, you know, it's ADA, assuming the village will help. And then if the village helps, people, we're, we're setting the precedent. And then people will say, well, they didn't have the permission, but they built it, and then now you granted it afterwards. So that means if we could build something and we say we can't change it, therefore you put the village in the position that they, it's not like they don't want to sell it to you or something, but they probably will not, it's not willing or not, but from legal.
Well, we don't know.
The precedent's already set.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the precedent's already set because they had allowed us to build our stoop before.
No, but, but, no, but, but you're purchasing that bit, it's, you know, it's, it's, uh, you, you know it's gonna be purchased and then they, they, you know, it's not like unknown and then you build it.
Right.
But this is an unknown, but it's already built, therefore there is a problem.
Well.
If people look at it and say, how can they do it? You know, because before they, before they challenge you, you say, well, we, we already have the agreement to purchase it, even if it's not in our hand, but it's already approved.
But that's also, that's, I mean, that, that may be, we're, I mean, that's pure conjecture, right?
Right. But this is, this is what, what we're trying to do here, is let's put all our brains together to see what, what kind of things you may be facing. So instead of thinking one thing and try to say, but I, you know, the village may say, okay, fine. But I think there will be, one of the questions is.
Right, yes, I totally, I totally understand.
Yeah.
So, um, so, uh, all right, so what, it can't be solved today. So what the summary is, we will come back to you when this is resolved, I think. And then we will just, um, I, I don't know if this is, um.
Well, you're, you're, you need, and you, you do need to come back anyway and, um, and, and present us with an updated site plan, right? That reflects the.
The solution to this, yeah.
That reflects, right, it reflects the solution to that, to reflect, and I think that this, you know, the cafe looks different now, right? You have to, you have to come back with, with updated pages and an application to change the site plan. There's probably a, um, and there's probably changes that impact your parking table now.
Is it a good, less or more?
We did reduce the interior space, um, but we did push that back, I see compared to that, we did push that back.
Yeah, yeah.
So, anyway, but I will, I will, um, look at the, the parking table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, um, yeah, and, and it has to, it has to reflect, so the, the site plan, the new, whatever, regard, regardless of, of how this works out, right, the site plan has to be updated to reflect, um, a vi- viable path, ADA path.
To that, yeah.
On, on here, right? So even, even within the envelope, you have to have viable ADA, you have to have the, along the porch, right? And inside, right? As well as your, your, um, the, the, this.
Right.
Which is no longer ADA compliant, needs to be ADA compliant, so your ramp has to be ADA compliant. Unless you are choosing one of the.
The lift.
You are shifting, right, if you, unless you're choosing the lift.
Yeah, because, because.
Does the lift even work though? Sorry, in this location, Stephanie, because you would, you'd have to cut this part of the ramp out.
Well, that part of the ramp.
So that it could go all the way down? No.
Well, yeah, I mean, but Juhi said that the, the ramp can come, the ramp can come apart.
Oh, yeah, it's all wood. I'm just curious if, let's say you got rid of this part of the ramp, in order to install the lift here and have it meet this grade.
Yeah, you might have to take, you might have to take it back here, like, take it all the way back to here.
You might have to take a notch to here.
But that's just this ramp, right?
Right, sorry.
And if she gets, if she does get a state variance, she has to do that anyway.
Well, um, yeah, and/or you could, so in order to, again, just in, and I understand, I know, I, I emphasize with all the problems of the electric, um, lift, but in the interest of time, I don't know if I agree, I'm teasing, um, but, but I, but I do think it is the most expedient solution without knowing what the village, because I, we don't know what the village is gonna do. And it's like, you, you just don't know, like, we can't predict, is it gonna take months to resolve it? I mean, I think this village, as you laid out the three option, three options of negotiation with the village, from my perspective, seem preferable from a cost and time perspective than the state solution, just because the state solution implies complete removal, whereas this, this solution implies a partial removal and waiting and then, like, maybe you could have a super careful contractor remove it so carefully that you could just pop it back in if you work it out with the village. I don't know.
Right, right, I did ask the mayor, I said, would it be helpful that we just remove this for now?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah.
Negotiate the sale and put it back, you know, that was one of the questions that we had asked, but it was an email, I don't, I don't remember, I think it was after a meeting, but anyway, so we couldn't ask that. I mean, we were, we're, we did, the only reason why I moved forward was my conversation with, uh, this mountain was like, oh, okay, so yeah, this is, this is reasonable. And so I just, you know, I jumped the gun, that based on our experience with the, you know, and it was ADA. So I was thinking, oh, why would they give us a hard time with ADA ramps? So that was my mistake, yes, I.
I think that the lift, the more, and as I hear you talk about it, I really, the lift is the, that is the most expedient way to get her, her, to get, and it wouldn't even have to be a temporary CO, she could get, she'd get her CO, she could open her business and bang, and.
And then you get everything and then.
Right away, got liquor license.
Yeah, and it doesn't have the ADA variant or any, any problem at all.
Yeah, totally practical.
People leave the lift.
Well, no, I know, that may be so, but it's legally required to give them ADA compliant access
But Judy.
Until you can solve the non.
And it's the fastest way to deliver ADA compliance and open her business, like, in a week.
Right now, yeah.
Because you could do it all within this, right?
Yeah.
And it's, and perspective, potentially, it is a, it can be a, a full, you know, a permanent solution.
Right, I have to go back to HDRB and get their approval.
How much is a?
I don't think the, I don't think that kind of an element, that's not subject, ADA, ADA compliance isn't subject to HDRB approval.
No, I don't, I, you know, like Silver's home, once they were doing that, the historical board didn't say anything, it was something that they.
It's just not, it's, it's federal, it's a federal requirement.
Yeah, it's, it has nothing to do with the. It has nothing to do with the historical board.
Silver's home has a lift?
No, not, not a lift, there was something they were doing, the angles or something, but, uh, they didn't have the fronts.
It was a ramp, yeah, it was a.
Yeah, but there was something that, that was a change, but the, I don't think it went through the historical board. It, it, the historical board is, cares about the windows, that one, this and that, but they didn't say anything about the stoop thing.
Yeah, the, the HDRB can't, can't limit the.
Accessibility, I think it's, it's a matter of that overrides that, yeah, definitely.
So, but anyway, um.
Definitely, because there's no other, there's no other access, right? Like, over at, um, La Bouchon, there is an assisted, an assisted door, an assisted access for ADA, but it's in the back, and that's because they can't do it on, on the porch, right?
Yeah, um, okay, I mean, I'll, I mean, trying to get the power out there and, you know, to do that, it is not as simple. And I will have to investigate, you know, whether we can have it, because let's say of the flood level, the, the lift, you know, maybe has to live up here, you know, for example.
But that's within, that's totally within the envelope of what Laura Bergman owns.
Yeah, and nobody could say.
So she can have it as high as it needs to be, as low as it needs to be?
Nobody could say anything.
Well, doesn't, but doesn't it have to be at street level so that somebody can use it?
Well, you can, you can call it.
You would call it, so you could keep it high and then call it down, like an elevator.
Yeah, you could keep it high. Yep, and that way you can retain, you can retain your, uh, your deck here, accessing the tourist home. You'll have access to the deck, access the tourist home, and then access the front entry porch and fabulous cafe, which I can't wait to go and buy wine in.
Everybody's ready, yeah.
It's a, I think it would be a financial hardship on her, but I'll, I'll let her go.
But, yes, well, the, the existing, just the fastest, the village will approve something, otherwise anything would be more costly.
Yeah, I just don't know why.
I, I don't.
I think in the grand scheme.
Why they are being, um, difficult about ADA ramp, um, and it's for the benefit of many.
Oh, but we understand what you're doing, we, you know, like, we, we, we see what their thoughts are, what the situation is. They're just, right now, it's not up to us to approve anything.
Yeah, um, yes, but at least I know what I have to do.
Yes, sequencing wise, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, we, as far as, we understand that Laura, you know, has the right, you know, to have the porch, and we, we, you know, calculated a turnaround space here and we, you know, gave a generous, more than enough landing, you know, for ADA.
But again, remember, right now, the front porch has to be ADA accessible, right? There has to be a, an ADA compliant path, so we'll need to see that on the, we'll need, we'll need, we'll need a, an updated site plan.
Yeah, that, that reflowers the current, the current state of the, of the property.
Meanwhile, you negotiate that, but, uh, but the, you know, as we can not recommend, but as ideas, pitch in our ideas, I think that probably the lift is the fastest and the, and in the long run, probably the most economical, if you think about it, because when, you know, time wise and everything. Because even you get the variance, you have to rip that whole part down in order to do that.
Yeah.
And, and that's gonna be very costly too.
The lift is gonna be less expensive than that, I predict.
So if you have a long-term resolution, uh, without getting the village further involved, uh, which means delay, um, maybe that's a, you know, that's a, that's a fastest way. It's not a better way, but it's de, definitely the fastest.
Well, and it, it gets, if the objective is for Laura Bergman to open her business as soon as possible, the,
To start, yeah.
You know, on, within the, within her property that she owns, the lift is gonna be the most expedient solution to deliver an ADA compliant access, and then the rest, you know, you can update the parking cable, you can show us that the front entry has, uh, that there's like, like a clear ADA compliant path of travel. And then, and then that's good, and then she can, she can open. Look at his foot.
Yeah, it, it, as one of my professors said, it's like going around the back of your hand to scratching this, this is, um,
Well, it may, it may, it may feel like that to you, but given, given what?
It's not, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense.
Given the property that she owns and what she is, what she has a right to do per the building inspector, that's what she has a right to do, so she can open her business very quickly.
Yeah, I mean.
So, depends, I mean, it depends on what her priority is. If her priority is to, is, if her, if Laura Bergman's priority is not to open as quickly as possible, but to persist in, in trying to acquire access so that this, the ADA ramp is, protrudes from what is currently approved, then, then that's her, you know.
It, it just defies logic, I mean, I'm just thinking of, let's say if I were a passerby and I, I see this perfectly fine solution, and then all of a sudden we rip it out and put a lift, it is so illogical, it's just mind-boggling.
Well, then, yeah.
It is mind-boggling, anyway, you got a copy, right? Thank you, thank you for all your thoughts.
Good luck.
Good luck.
It's tricky.
Okay, then, uh, next one.
Couple of comments.
No problem.
A couple of comments, all right. Um, board business, I think that's it for our board business.
No, you did a great.
Good night, Judy. Um, so does anybody have anything else to contribute to the description?
Um, no, another thing is not our board, um, business, but I, I, Jeff is here. Uh, I think somebody, somewhere in the village is poisoning, uh, the animals.
Oh, no.
Uh, last year, we had a, a raccoon, a, a big one, a fat one, we called him Fettle. He stayed with us around the area for about seven years, and one day we found him sick, and he was just wobbling.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then, um.
You know what?
Yeah.
This isn't board business.
No.
Let's, just before you continue, can I have, shall we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, and then we can.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So moved.
Excellent.
Okay.
Aye, all in favor.
Aye.
All in for their eye.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, so anyway, so Fettle die.
Thank you. Yeah.